Any questions on the meeting minutes from January, it says January 4th on the approval, January 3rd on the minutes, which day was it?
January 3rd.
Four to January 3rd. It's correct in the minutes, that's what matters. Any questions on the minutes? I get a motion to approve the Monday meeting minutes on January 3rd?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? Seeing now for reorganization. Any questions on reorganizations?
That was also the third.
Yes, it was, yeah. There is two separate meetings. No questions, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the reorganization meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll sign it.
All in favor? Okay, visitor comments. Start right up the front. You have anything Linda? Howie, anything? Kristy and Olay, do you?
I have three questions. I see in your bill you got a copy of the Sunshine Act manual. I assume all of you have read it. But you had a former attorney said that it was okay for you to approve the minutes before you heard visitor comments. I didn't agree with that answer and I still don't. As far as the Sunshine Act, my interpretation of it, it says that you cannot do any business until you have heard visitor comments. So I'd like you to review that section and give me an answer next month's meeting if you think it's still correct to do your minutes before you hear visitor comments. And the second question is, you take the attorney here over $5,800, what was that for?
Some of that would be the water authority stuff, some of that would have been some of the ordinance work, the cleanup ordinance, and you'd have to... Is there anything else?
Why would you be paying a bill for the water?
No, 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 the questions on the conversation amount consolidating or dissolving the board, et cetera, et cetera. You know, the conversation we've been having with the attorney to make sure we're doing that properly. That's who we're using, is the attorney.
So it's just some questions for the $5,800?
It's not just that, it was other things involving, like I said, the resolution for... Right, well, that, no, and that's part of the water authority stuff.
You have all the receipts.
Probably it's like the hearing that we had here for a few people that we tried to get to clean up, and they requested a hearing. So she attended that in person. We had her here for a couple other things. It's probably like a couple month bill.
It's miscellaneous.
Right.
Okay, my last question is, it was either the January meeting or maybe there was a discuss... Oh, I think it was December, because Rick Crugel was still here. And his answer to this was, well, it's always been that way. There was a discussion that years ago, before you approved any assessment permits, the water and sewage were to sign off on them, that they were okay. And it was from the conversation, it was stated that that used to be done, but somewhere along the line it got stopped. And you were gonna put it on an upcoming agenda so that your supervisors would discuss this issue. But I don't see it on the agenda.
That's right, we did say that.
Are you gonna put it on a future agenda?
We'll have to, just because of the new rules of how we set the agenda, 24 hours in advance, but yeah, we can actually get that added to a future agenda.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Fran?
Yeah, I wanna know, I heard you're gonna spend $3 million trying to buy your water and storage out?
Excuse me?
You're gonna spend $3 million instead of the sewer.
I don't know what was said at the sewer meeting.
But that's what was said, at the sewer.
I didn't hear that. I didn't hear that.
Okay.
You have to buy everything out, so it's over $2 million debt just for the sewer.
We don't have to buy anything out, it's transfer of debt, because we already backed the debt, we're already the co-signer on all the debt, township's name's already on all that debt. Every loan that everybody has, township's name's on it. So we don't have to buy anything out.
Well, I'm just saying, that's what they said, it was over $30 million.
It's a miss... I mean, the debt is the debt, it's not, it'll still be paid for by the builder. It's not part of the, it's not like an additional $3 million. So, our name's already on it, we already owe it if you default, but it's here that way.
Okay, well, how are you gonna run both identities on $30,000 for maintenance?
The maintenance, $30,000 is over and above the daily routine maintenance. The guy was here the last time, I think he answered that. If they do something during the day that they would normally do during the day maintenance-wise, that doesn't come out of the $30,000, that's something over and above what would happen in a normal day.
It comes out of the township then. Because we just talked to Infomark.
Okay.
When we let them come in, we all signed the thing, we let them come in for the, to look at the consent form. So last week when I were looking for the consent form, they called, and we had an issue about the pump that nobody wants to buy for the last six years. And it's part of the water company. We're gonna get a fine because it hasn't been put back in operation.
Okay.
Okay. And so, I told the guys, while you're talking to them, ask Infomark what they think about it.
What was Infomark there?
On the phone, please.
Oh, okay.
And I said, while you're talking to them, ask them, because the decision is, everything is wait till Infomark comes. Well, we're gonna get fined because this pump is not online for the last six years.
Who said to wait on the pump till Infomark comes?
Everybody.
Who's everybody?
At our meeting, we had brought it up at the meeting, we had the price and everything. They said, wait till Infomark comes. Now I'm gonna tell you. So, the phone call, I guess, went on, and when I said to ask, ask Infomark what they think, and they said, well, you better hook it up, because otherwise they're gonna have to add to the price. Because they're only giving out $30,000 for both sides for maintenance. So, I told the guys, I said, well, tell them to put it in writing, so I can bring it back to the board. You know what he said? I'll have to call Jeremy and ask him. So, I guess the whole board's out of the picture.
Who said that?
Infomark. I'll have to call Jeremy.
And ask him if he wants what, to ask him what?
To get the piece of paper saying that he said that he's not paying for it. He said, yes, you should get the pump.
Okay, if you're missing a pump for five or six years, you should get the pump. I should have got to tell you that.
You don't have to tell me that.
Why is it the missing for five or six years? That's the number one question.
Wait a minute, you were on there six years ago.
Yeah.
The pump wasn't bad.
This is the first I'm aware of it.
The first I was aware about two months ago.
Okay.
And I guess they jumped the pump. And it's asking down 102, there's more problems in the emission.
This is the problem, Fran.
The problem is, Infomark says to call Jeremy. I guess they don't call the boards.
Fran, I talked to Donovan probably a month or two ago, and I told him to look around if he get a pump with that spec, using a chip on the specifications of the pump. And to get a second hand one or whatever, something that works and put it back online. And I don't know how he ever made out with that one at Hunt for this pump, rather than buying a brand new one.
You have something to add to the conversation?
Yes, I have something to add to the conversation. First of all, we have not had a letter from DEP saying what we're supposed to do. We have not received a letter. And second of all, I'd like to know why Joe comes in and talks with Donovan without first talking to the board.
This was before I was supervisor.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
You're...
People want to do.
That's not your area.
Well, tell us tomorrow.
That's it.
Tell you.
That's pretty much it, we haven't received a letter on the, am I correct?
That's right.
If you talk to the guy sitting right behind you, you can get it straightened out and out.
He was told by DEP it has to be put in, so I'm gonna put it in.
It does have to be put in, Fran, but there's a...
But we go through.
But we don't have to put it in tomorrow, they said they would send us a letter about it.
Should have been in six years ago.
Well, that's not your fault or my fault.
But I'm just saying.
They said, we will send you a letter. Telling you our thoughts about the pump.
My problem is...
And then you and the board could all work together and figure out a way to get it installed. And I said, okay, thank you very much.
How many people don't go in my hair? Say what you want, all I'm saying is they should be talking to the boards, the sewage and the water boards, not Jeremy. Does he have to go to Jeremy?
But it's not Jeremy's fault he said that.
I wanted a letter just to show the boards what the man said. And he would not put it on an email to show us, he says he has to talk to Jeremy before he can do that.
I didn't get the conversation with him, Fran, so I don't know what the story is, I mean, if you think that he's gonna add it on.
And he never put it.
If you were asking them to put it in, I'm sure that that would have been...
I don't know why they would...
They're gonna put an addition on it.
Yeah, because it's already missing now, they're not here now, it's been missing for five or six years.
Saying that it's gonna be an addition over $30,000, so the township's gonna end up...
And what's the cost that you got on the pump?
$8,000.
$8,000 plus.
Plus the...
That's just for the pump, that's not for everything that goes with the pump. There's a lot of stuff that goes with it that's gonna raise it. So they should not even stand talking to Infomark about that pump.
They have to.
No, they don't.
It's part of the consent form, it's going to be very...
No, it isn't, not if we get the pump in before.
It's gonna be part of the consent form very soon.
Not, no, it isn't.
So, you spoke to DEP?
Yes.
On the pump?
Yes.
They're gonna send you what they want you to do with it, in writing?
They said they will send a letter telling us we are violating the...
Permit.
The permit of our facility by not having that pump, and that we need to get one installed. There's no violation attached to that letter, there's no fine attached to that letter. They said this will give you time to discuss it with the board, and the board figure out a way to get the funds to get this pump. If you waste too much time fooling around with it, then we are going to open the consent order and insert that into it, and then you will be fined, and violations will happen. But there's steps to go through first, if you don't send...
And you talked to Infomark, and they said, well, you need to put the pump in, right, Fran? And you said...
If not, it will go on to the cost.
We need...
Right, if not, it would come out of the cost, because they're gonna have to put it in if you don't have it in there already. So one way or the other, the water authority's still gonna pay for the pump. So I guess the decision becomes...
So that the $30,000 is what I'm trying to tell you, is not gonna come to these things. You guys are gonna be paying and paying and paying. But where did you come up with all this money? After you paid $935,000?
Additional, the $30,000 is built into the contract price, there's additional money left over after that.
Very little, very little.
More than what's being, that's at the end of year year by going and looking at your budgets.
You can budget all you want, but when you said $935,000, I don't know where you're getting that.
Comes right off of you guys' numbers. Water and sewer.
Last couple of years, I don't know where them numbers come from, because when we did the budget, we had a hell of a time even coming up with. And that's the...
So we need to know that information, if your records are inaccurate, we need to know that information.
They were accurate, they're running accurate now.
I told you, I told you that at the first meeting, I don't know where you come up with that $935,000.
That's two, that's both authorities, Fran.
I know that's both authorities.
It's the income that you both list on your budget, and your audits matching. So that means you're taking that money you got in, unless your auditor's wrong as well.
I don't know who's wrong, I've only been here a year, a little over a year and a half now, when we did the budget, it doesn't add up either.
Go ahead, Kristy.
You haven't signed the contract yet, right?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I hope not, because it's dangerous.
Another question, Fran, you're done, go ahead. How many pumps are over there in that pump house?
There's four, supposed to be four.
All together, and there's one missing?
Yes.
So we're down to three.
There's three with one missing, yes.
So we're down to three. And each pump is a different spec, the flow rates different?
One's for each drick, and there's a backup for each one. But it's been missing for six, seven years.
And it went out to be worked on and never came back, is that the situation?
We hunted it down, hunted it down, and the guys said, they told them to jump it. So that's where it's at.
That probably got all Infra's crap.
They said you left it here too long, and it's gone, because I heard they changed company.
Who company was this?
So can't be rebuilt.
Yeah, it could have been.
Uh, no, no.
It's gone, they probably rebuilt and sold it.
Oh, fuck.
I mean, that's a pretty fishy thing for a company to say.
I don't know who the company was.
Do you have any record on emails or anything about them contacting you, saying, hey, your pump's done, pick it up?
Hey, I can't even find W, like 18, 20W2s, so... Or 2020W2s.
That's why I'm telling you, gotta watch this $935,000, because I don't know where these numbers are coming from.
Well, honestly, they're coming off of your budget and your audit. Now, your water company audits are up to date. Sewer authorities hasn't had a complete audit since 2019.
Okay, how do you say there's $935,000 in there?
I'm using their budget and their previous audits to arrive at that number. We know that the money hasn't gone down from year to year on billing.
The estimist estimates they're gonna kill you. I'm just telling you, the water and the storage uses almost every bit of money they bring in. And these people are not going to give you any more than what they're telling you on that piece of paper.
I understand that, that's what the contract's...
That's what scares. That's what scares.
Isn't a Bob's turn back?
I think so, go ahead.
I wasn't really sure if I counted or not. I guess I have three questions. First of all, under old business, it says ordinance update, what do we need to be talking about?
The ordinance, the, what is the name of that ordinance? What Nancy enforces, she gives an update at every meeting on that.
Well, could we add a name in here for the next one?
Enforcement update?
enforcement update, maybe would be better.
Okay, the second thing is, a couple meetings ago, when the state police was here, we talked about a secondary power fee from Houston Township and First Energy, since West End and Peneleque appeared to be under the same umbrella. At that point, I thought the supervisors were going to get engaged on this, and there's nothing in the minutes, there's nothing on the agenda. What's the status of that?
No, I haven't looked into it at all, has anybody else?
And I don't know how to put a letter together, because I don't understand what happened.
Well, the sewer authority was gonna send you a letter, and they had oil still, oh, you were there for that discussion.
They don't hear the deal from now until I tell them today about it.
You might understand the grid better, I don't know, but I know the Kenfield's out of power opposite of us. I mean, I get a lot of customers from both townships, and there's days that we have power and they don't, and vice versa, so I don't know that it benefits anyone, but if they could do the same thing and kick it on back and forth, it would benefit everybody.
Yeah.
I'm no electrician.
That's, that could be bad.
And I don't know where you, you know, where regionally or locally you start that conversation, but I think that would...
Well, I think we would write to our parent power company, which is West End, and probably copy the people at First Energy and Peneleque, and the state representative.
Yeah, possibly.
I mean, I'm not sure who's gonna take the pole by the horns here and try and beat someone.
Yeah, I mean, for the time being, I've got my hands full with what I'm doing, but maybe one of these guys would have to see that.
Well, you have three supervisors, how about you guys?
Yeah, I can tell.
You're the most experienced on the board.
I can do that.
Okay. Then the next thing we discussed with the officer was engine breaks. And Jeremy said at that point in time, we don't have an ordinance about it, but the officer said if you had an ordinance, then they could do something. So, I don't think that's brain surgeon, so you call PSAT.
Right, you can actually get a copy of those from PSAT.
Yeah, just call them up and get it, and take a look at it, and as long as we're paying, spending all this money on our solicitor, maybe we could have a few nickels for the engine brake ordinance. So, I appreciate seeing item D to describe what ordinance update is, and then under new business, perhaps drafting a letter to the entities that might have influence about getting a secondary power fee. And the engine brake ordinance, we're gonna start there by getting a copy from PSAT and distributing it to the three supervisors, and then we could be in a position to discuss that at the next meeting. Thank you for your time. Is everything clear that I said?
I got it.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, I'm sorry, you're the last one, I'm sorry.
I have a couple of things I'd like to have cleared up, okay? One is that I listened to a sewer meeting on YouTube, okay? And a statement was made that maybe getting quality water might be worth doing up the sewage plant. Well, I saw, I went back through that whole paper that you had out there, okay, as a proposal from this company, I saw nothing in there at all about enhancing water quality. Did you see that anywhere?
Properly treating the water will give you the quality. You know, it'll be a little bit easier.
Here's what exactly was said there. Marine crop, I want safe drinking water, I don't want lead in the drinking water, I want professionals handling it, I'm tired of buying bottled water. To get safe drinking water, if sewage has to go along with the Infomark contract, then I'm all for it. Our main concern is safe drinking water. Now, with regards to that, lead, where does the lead come from? It's not like it's coming in the water, the water is leaching the lead out of solder joints.
Right. Based on the treatment of the water. Not just because you got solder joints, it's the treatment of the water that...
No, the lead is already in people's houses, that's it.
Yes. What if it's properly treated, it doesn't leach?
Well...
That's the difference.
The false thing is that...
Younger psychologists have old plumbing.
I think that that's already becoming, you're already getting that under control, according to Donovan.
Thanks to the E group, thanks to Brian Blue, wouldn't that him go in people in a drought? I kept telling people, you know, that decision, he's gonna make people sick.
That's Patrick, that was Patrick.
Well, him and Patrick. We sat in a meeting, we said, should you do this in a drought? But everybody just blowing on their head, they're getting away, they want more money off us for something that they ruin.
I think this is still Bob's time.
Yeah, right, okay. Now, actually, we're on Jim's time, so...
Yeah.
Anyway, what I was trying to say is that, over the years, aren't there guidelines for treating the chemicals in the water? And weren't they followed, as you say now that...
No, if they were followed, it wouldn't be under our second consent order in the 12 years I've been here. If, every time they're not followed, you get in trouble with the MAAP, you pay your lawyer, you pay your engineers, and you pay, 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 but that seems to be okay in this community, to not follow the rules and then pay the consequences, rather than get somebody that's gonna follow the rules. That's my stance.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything on that?
I'd like to do, one more thing I wanna ask, and I, rumor's a fluke, okay? And I'll ask directly, I don't believe in going behind somebody's back and saying something I wouldn't say to their things. Rumor has it, Jeremy, that you're wanting to be compensated by this company, is that possible?
Absolutely not.
Jesus.
Come on. No, I'm not gonna be compensated anyway by this company. I'm gonna be paying them the same as every other customer.
Yeah, I wanted to hear you say that, okay? But you know, because like I said, the rumor's about, and I was about, if it's true enough, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with me not taking a job, nothing wrong. But, you know, the thing about it, okay, is I would just look me up, if that be the case, then you should not be negotiating contracts.
I have a job, I've told people that for the last multiple years, I was gonna take every job here, my 12 years. So, no surprise where the rumors are flying, you know what I mean?
Like I said, I just, you know...
Okay.
People say things, and I'll say it to your face every time.
Yeah, no problem, appreciate that.
So, anyway, that's...
All right.
That's it.
Jess, did you get any, okay, I think we're good on the visitors, did you get anything, any clarification?
Yeah, I talked with, I talked with the Soil Services Company, and they said over the four years that they've been doing the component two, that nobody's ever had to advertise for a resolution. If you're adopting this paperwork, and the resolution number, it can be arbitrary, it's not like a step system on there, whatever your next one is. It's my sewage plant that you're adopting, and this is...
That isn't the reso, that is the resolution.
You guys don't have to write anything up, it's this piece of...
So the numbers...
So it's you guys approving this.
So what's our, what was our last resolution passed?
It passed in June.
And they said, is that...
Twenty twenty-two dash one.
For you guys to go back and...
Yeah.
...look at your meetings, and think, this is what you guys passed to my sewage sewage plant.
Well, that's why when it said resolution with resolution number, I said, oh, we're gonna have to do here.
What's going on?
My question to Jess is, how did your test holes work out for you?
The first time?
Did it all pass?
So, when we originally had Russ Braun come down here, he passed my, passed a bit on my line, with 20 inches, three on the number.
How many holes?
We did one. First hole we found. And then you came to submit the component Y, and DEP said we're submitting a little component, we've been going to, your parents have the wobbly woods on there, it's a commercial lot. We wanted to come out and expect to cite, we came out and cited, cite failed Russ Braun's...
Failed Russ Braun's?
Failed Russ Braun's, limiting zone, changed it from 20 inches to 10, 2.2.
I know.
So then we had to go higher stuff.
Did you get a copy of your road book to see what your road book says compared to Russ Braun's?
DEP is gone.
Oh, it's gone?
No, no, DEP is like, whatever the DEP soil scientist says.
He's on his head now.
Well, I, well, we mentioned, now, now, it's a spray irrigation system or an alternate system, which eats up an acre of the property, and it's probably $15,000 or more to install, because DEP came out and...
Yeah, but Russ approved the first one, Sam.
He did, but DEP can come out and negate Russ Braun, even though DEP trained Russ Braun on how to use resource.
Just get one of those incinerator toilets.
I like to put DEP in that incinerator.
Exactly, that's a commercial, these new rules, property.
Yeah, because they gave, I mean, five acres of their parcel that has wobbly woods on it, and that is a commercial property, so that turns into a different component, and they... I think what they wanted to do was see, make sure that wobbly woods is operated professionally.
Can you change it back to non-commercial, DEP?
No, because unless they stop doing wobbly woods.
Oh, but you know, it's your property?
You could. Because it came on, it's a residential, because it came on to a commercial property.
State commercial.
No, not mine, my house will be residential, but I, if we're gonna get my sewage passed, it falls underneath the commercial category.
I see, I see.
In the beginning, though, it was residential, then commercial, now you're going to residential again, so you go back to where it started, which would be residential.
But as soon as you throw a commercial component in there?
Yeah, but they don't do the wobbly woods anymore.
Yeah, they're still good.
Well, they still good?
Yeah. Soon to be me, I'll be the new owner.
Sounds like some technicalities, me, so.
Yeah, he's a.
Long story short, he's gonna need Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one passed here at the meeting, so we can sign that. And that is actually that whole component two sort of plan, which will, like, I'm gonna stay on file and change the rest. So make it complicated, it's complicated.
Oh, yeah. Like I said, Russ Bronn, we've got this.
Russ signed, we were looking at that, Russ signed off, and then we got to the part where we had.
Russ Bronn.
So that's how.
Yeah, you can run. No, Russ was accepted.
Well, in order, that's right, D P is wrong.
Yep.
Signature Secretary J Township, I think that's your J Township. In order to, oh, meeting to move on, let's go ahead and add, I need a motion to add H Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one. H twenty-two.
Twenty twenty.
New business, it would be H Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one. Do I have a motion to add that?
I make a motion to add H twenty, twenty-two dash one.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now I need a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one, which is this component two sort of plan, that's already been signed off by the next.
I make a motion to
Uh, you're an official.
Prove H twenty twenty-two dash one.
Twenty twenty-two dash.
Dash two.
Dash one, that one, that one, one? Twenty twenty-two dash one, first resolution of the year.
Then I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you, need a signature for me?
But I can't, I don't.
Yeah, I'll second it. Does he need a signature for me?
No, I need my own, though.
Hey, I'm sorry, that shouldn't be happening.
We can all look at the bills while they're working that piece. We'll play some time. Do we have, do you know how many questions was on them?
Many questions on the bills. In the back row there. Many questions on the bills.
Do I have a motion to approve the bills without a question on the bills?
I make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second.
Let me look at it. There's probably one in there that I don't like.
Oh, it's no problem, you don't wanna have to wait a whole other month, it sounds like they're putting it to the wringer.
I know. I've been waiting to start back in.
I understand, so I'll second it.
I'll, I'll just, no, you.
Oh, boy. All in favor?
Aye. And I'll make you.
I do have a question with the bills.
They just say they need a hard copy.
Yeah, no problem. Do you not have, they need a copy, you don't have a copy here for it?
Uh, D, but they're just inside.
Oh, yeah, give them.
Unless you want to, I don't know if they're signed yet.
No, we'll do it.
Sure.
Thanks.
Jamie, I need the bills here, we just approved.
Go over here, boss.
Go ahead.
When you're ready, when you're ready. Did them manuals come in?
Not yet, no.
Okay. You're ready, it's one of them, it'll be out.
Yep.
I'm surprised used to guys didn't want a copy of the bill too.
I agree, what manual are we talking about?
I can print them off, though.
Wherever you go, I got it. For three, I got it, the manuals, I have them.
You talking about the coat book, the orange coat book?
No, this is sunshine, and.
Oh.
It's all on mine. I think it's nice to have a paper, when you're not here at the computer.
Okay.
I got one in my pocket right now.
This guy and Joe.
Guy, yeah, guy first, Joe second, all in favor, on the bills, roll.
Yeah, guy.
Okay, treasures report for you, dummy, we're digging it.
So to the resolution, I'm sorry, and Joe.
Guys and Joe, all in the manuals, yeah.
General fund balance as of January third is one hundred thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars, seventy-seven cents. Balance as of February seventeenth was sixty thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-five cents. State fund balance as of January third was one hundred and eleven thousand, sixty-one dollars, sixty-four cents. Balance as of February seventeenth was one hundred and one thousand, eight, eighty-four dollars, twenty cents. Play it, balance as of February seventeenth, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two. Capital reserve balance as of February seventeenth, hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. State fund C V balance as of February seventeenth, forty thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine. General fund C V balance as of February seventeenth, eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-one. And total deposits for the month was thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-six cents.
Okay. Court.
State funds of water, forty, meeting minutes, letter about commission for the needs permit, letter gotten to bring it from our commission, talked directly to D P, got consent order, the town's approved for the maintenance, Frank's got him, letter to supervisors, and upcoming meeting minutes.
We understand also, so what friends discussed this letter was?
His letter was about the billing, how Eads was billing us, that's the letter we're talking, oh, this is a different letter?
It's a kind of.
Yeah, he had an invoice from Eads where Brian Bloom worked on the bridges, wanted to know about qualifications for working on bridges, and billing, and why he was billing as a water wastewater operator. Did he answer that, as far as wastewater, water wastewater operator was what was title on the bill?
I don't think Brian Bloom is an engineer, is he?
No. The engineering work that was, was designed for the Calumney Bridge was designed by the bridge department of Eads. Brian was sent on their behalf to oversee it, you know?
He's just a field man.
Right.
He's, I don't know what his, what his title was.
Two days ago.
I don't think they should be touching that bridge, you don't even have a copy of their insurance.
Yes, I do.
Yes, we do.
How many millions is it? Well, it should be millions when you're working on a bridge. Last I checked, they only carry about two hundred thousand.
Okay, so he did respond in writing, water wastewater operator is his current title at the company. Um, he's actually a certified operator, but most of the time spent doing municipal sanitary work. Any work that is completed on bridges by me is under the supervision of our structural department. The P E's in our structural department complete the details needed. And anything I do on site, as in observing work being completed or getting information for future repairs, is completed per the instructions of our structural department. So that's exactly what it was, just like I just explained to you. They sent us the repair detail, which we had to get approved through P E D O. It wasn't just like, oh, they give us a piece of paper and we're gonna fix the bridge. It had to be approved through P E D O after they supplied it with us. We did the work, Keith Caruso and our guys and Brian observed, to make sure we were doing it to the, to the spec, to the engineer's drawing, okay? He actually, and then took pictures and documented it as well, so that he could take it back to their peoples. And we had to give those pictures to D P, or to P E D O as well. So it's not like it was just willy-nilly done by a wastewater water operator. But that's his title, so. I assume, I assume no matter where they build, where he's at, that's his title shows up in their favor. I don't agree with it either, if he's doing field work here, he should be.
He should be certified to work on a bridge.
Yeah, whatever, yeah. But it is confusing when you see it on the bill. Okay, he didn't actually work on the bridge, he just documented, made sure we were following the plan.
He says he put the screws in everything on the bridge. Read the bill.
Don't look at me. What's my home?
Yeah, I don't think he did any, he might have, he might have went and purchased some screws, because there was a problem with the length of the screws, so he might have actually went and picked them up while the guys were doing other work.
He was working on the bridge.
At one point in time, once they, they sent them on length screws and bolts, I said, and they had to go.
He's dangerous to be working on a bridge.
Okay. All right, so that was correspondence. Real maintenance equipment, those reports are there, does anybody have any questions on those? No questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Anybody in the audience aware that we have one truck down? Do we all know what's going with the hip?
Probably not. I don't know, but we have five trucks and three drivers, so we're still in good shape. That's not the first truck to go down.
That, that truck may be under guarantee, isn't it?
No.
Well, it's not.
And then, I don't know which one it is, one's two thousand and seven, and one's two thousand and eight.
It's always, two thousand and seven.
No, one dude run out, it's a long time ago.
We bought them used from Ridgeway.
We were originally selling everybody the tanks, it's been sitting up all these years. The written, second down here.
That's at G M C you're talking about?
Yeah.
Oh. Mr. Ron's truck, that's in it for what he.
They actually were running that since this one went down, it's just a spare.
Okay.
Yeah. I'd like to keep it spare, we did sell that, the original red Louisville used to sit down there, we did sell that uh, last year, right? Yeah.
Who bought that?
I don't remember.
Paul Blake.
There you go.
Twenty-six, twenty-nine dollars.
Paul Blake.
Twenty-six, twenty-eight, that's he gave for.
Yeah, 'cause I bought the one before, you know?
Yeah, a couple hundred bucks, I don't know.
Okay, guys, let's go.
Well, the transmission over there.
Yeah, the. It was in the bed, we were clear about that.
Go, guys.
Okay, let's go. Old business, flood issues, Curzy Run, Victor signed the.
Um, Bob Run, or Bob Run, what I just called that, I give this on the market.
Okay, so he's still in the signing, is he?
Oh, Bob was on the issue for fourteen, so, yeah.
Why, I thought that Victor, he's wanting to sign it, so that's no problem, but nothing's new there, we're just getting.
Did you get high water issues, or what's going on?
Remember, don't plug.
I swear, you think, Victor, about all these meetings, we've been talking about this stuff. Well, I would, you know, something else. Is, we already have a plan in place for over there between Willie's garage and Victor's, to build the log structures like they have over at the senior center, the same history in the belt? No?
Well, it's hard to tell.
Victor had to sign a land agreement to allow them to access the property through his, the work area through his property. Because he has the road that goes down there, everybody else has a ton of twelve-foot bank, so he's gonna let them go in on his property, go down and do the work, actually below his house and right behind Asslum, which is fair, that's where the work is done.
Okay.
So, that's what we got.
And it's gonna happen, when?
Uh, in the summer, we don't have it slated yet, but when we.
When it creeps through the wall?
Well, you can only work between June and October. After the first of June, and have to be out of water by October, doing its fish. Okay. Water sewer, Infomarc. Um, the next step in this process for us is to enter into a contract negotiation with Infomarc, according to our solicitors, so, um, the numbers like Pranny's been talking about are a proposal, so in order to get into a contract, um, there will be actual contract negotiation. Those numbers can change, we've been discussing how we may may or may not have the increase attached to the C P I, because inflation's been willy-nilly. Irregardless, uh, we can't talk about the contract without a motion tonight to, uh, enter into contract talks with Infomarc. So I need a motion to enter into contract talks with Infomarc.
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? No, nay?
Nay.
Okay. All right. That, to enter into contract negotiations. Um, again, money is the issue, so if you actually have something you need to show me, where you guys aren't showing, have the money, that you're showing on paper, I need to know that, okay?
Yeah, I think we better look at what we have on paper right now, because we have hardly anything on paper right now, nothing to touch with your. Two hundred and, a hundred and thirty at the sewage plant ain't gonna cover this deal. We eat all that, they eat all that, to go on, we can't be paying them through six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I think it's a bad idea.
You're, and I think I explained that, you're already paying out the six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year right now.
Yes, we do, but them guys ain't here to make no money. Them guys are here to make money, they're not here just to play games.
Right, okay.
They don't wanna make fifty bucks.
All right, anyhow, that's where we're at now, okay.
Pranny, you should add that we're, we're one of the highest priced utility companies in the area. Between how many miles, thirty, forty miles?
I know Houston's higher than we are.
Really?
Yeah, because they raised the money that we charge them, and we charge them what we charge us.
I don't know what their sewage is up there, what's going on.
And they're a municipality, so they're all together there.
Okay, letter, CEO of business, Calumney Pipe Bridge.
The signs are at sixteen times, it's.
We don't have anything to do on that right now, intending on doing four more repairs this summer. That's probably gonna depend on whether we have somebody to do the repairs, because Keith was doing the repairs, and he's been having some health issues. So may have to look around, find somebody else with bridge certifications, so. Maybe Eads can sell somebody with bridge certifications, but Cheedo was a hands-on guy, and that's what we, you know, we worked really well. But we'll see how it pans out as the year progresses.
I do know a certified welder.
Yeah, they're not doing any welding, but.
If you do, this guy down here just moved in, he's certified, he works for D U B O school as a teacher. He has a home truck and stuff.
I don't know, if you, if you know, I'm asking if he has any bridge certifications, because Cheedo has all that stuff.
I will ask.
And I, I don't know, I mean, hopefully, he'll, he'll be back up on his feet, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's too bad.
Right. Okay, ordinance update, Nancy, anything new on the ordinance?
Um, well, there are three that are gonna be going back to the magistrate, unfortunately, they didn't quite understand the first time they went to the magistrate, so they will be going back again, and will probably be getting higher fines than they did the first time. And then there is one new person that I'm going to be sending to the magistrate, because I tried to talk to them, and that didn't work, so we'll be going to the magistrate.
What's the infraction on that?
Garbage.
Garbage. And what about the other?
And junk, garbage and junk.
Was there three before this last one?
Yeah, it's all garbage and junk.
All same thing?
Yep.
The rats and rodents?
It's gonna fall.
Bedbugs, for sure.
Yeah, that's another one. Uh, yeah, I, okay, so you have four active right now?
Yeah.
Okay. And two that went to appeal here, that we have the hearing on. There's been nothing further with that? Nobody, anybody from the?
I don't know what happened after our solicitor.
Well, we presented the, their, the findings from our attorney, which still found them to be in, you know?
Violation.
Violation of the ordinance, and their attorney was given that notice. We haven't heard a thing since. So we're gonna have to talk to Stephanie about how, you see, you're probably gonna end up back somewhere.
Either she has to call the attorney, or I have to call the attorney, or somebody has to call their attorney.
Yeah.
You're gonna keep paying more and more on attorney fees, huh?
Some people are, yeah. Okay, ordinance update, is done greater on this bid?
The reserve was not met sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred is the highest bid that we got, is it the same, was that the same bid the month?
No, it was eighty-five.
Okay, all right, it was eighty-five before, now we're at sixty-five.
Yeah, we have them two guys from.
Sounds like Clarion.
I had a guy call here today.
Was it Oak Creek, town or something?
Yeah, I had orally talked to a gentleman from Bottington, or I'm not sure. About two and a half hours away, um, he was asking questions, and he asked, maybe if he could come up and look at it next week. So I don't know.
So somebody that bid on it, or somebody that just saw it on there, and it's another township?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The high bid, please?
Sixty, sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred.
Yeah. Um, so, did you, we haven't extended it yet, or we can extend it, or we wanna wait and see what these people do? Wait until another month here and put it out in the spring, if not? You can sell directly, you don't have to have it listed on there, you sell to another municipality.
I, I talked to the road crew guys, and they had issues with the newer grader already. Computer components going out and so forth in the middle of the job, and they would like to keep this one for backup. Because the newer one isn't, is efficient as the acclaimed is.
It's, yeah.
It has one year to do, but that one's still not here.
You know, they're gonna break down.
Yeah, but the, the old one doesn't have all the computer components on it. No, but it has.
Lots of trouble with these new modern equipments, it's those computers and stuff, they don't go with water and dust and stuff.
We can't handle it.
That's right, that's right.
That's why the old source.
Let's just drop it off.
I think we should keep it for backup.
Let's get going.
Let's drop it off of there, off of municipal for now. Talk to this other township and see what they have to say, and then we can talk to the guys about, I don't know why we need two graders. I honestly don't know why we need two graders. I honestly don't know why we need two graders.
Well, they said they couldn't breathe in the old one.
Right, it has its problems of its own.
That is air exhaust.
Yeah, so he's actually keep on it. He's actually done that.
Yeah, I mean, I, there's no reason to have two sitting around if somebody wants to pay decent money for it.
Only six to the type of.
There's no, no trouble getting exhaust system, not fixed on any of them, if that's all it is, coming in the cab.
That's, the issue is we don't need two. You know what I mean? They did have a, they did have a problem with that one like Joe was talking about. It was a sensor. And they replaced the sensor and it's been working fine ever since.
Yeah, but it broke in the middle of the job when they needed it, and then they had to come and get the old one to finish the job, cause the new one wouldn't work.
Well, life happens.
A lot of equipment broke down in the middle of the job. I mean, it's just not gonna happen.
Bunch of trucks lined up, getting paid by the hour. You want somebody to get down.
Or the John Derry truck.
I think there is clean ditching that broke down. But anyway, we'll take it off there for the time being. Continue to talk about it, we can discuss it, I mean, it's.
Hey, Jeremy?
Yeah.
You ever gonna put that floor back on?
Yeah, we should have already done that.
Yeah, probably. Well, yeah, normally we try to wait till we have a bunch of stuff, but I don't, yeah, we're not doing it tonight. We're not getting very far tonight, but we'll consider that, putting that floor back out. And see if there's anything else that needs to go out. I think we got it pretty well cleaned out. Okay. Security camera quotes, Jamie.
I got the one from, what's my holiday?
And that was it?
I got it, and then I came down and looked, I mean, I called him and I thought I got it back. I don't know.
I'd like to get it, just, yeah. See what you can get back from them. You never got a hold of that other company either, the one from Clearfield?
I have the, it goes, it doesn't have voicemail.
I'll try to track that company down. I can't remember the name or else off my head.
What about Mitchell's place? They don't do that.
That's who we have, the Carlson, it was like almost seven.
That's Carlson's.
Oh, you never heard of them?
It's how much?
It's like, um.
Seventy-some hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the other one, the other guy ACS came and looked and said that he could do it with how many cameras?
Three.
Three, and this is how many that Car, Carlson's?
Six.
Six. So, he said he can get three cameras in that will cover all angles and, and with three. So, there should be a difference if we get a quote back from him, but we're gonna have to.
Yeah.
Quote back. We should have some quotes, I mean.
Is there been trouble afterward, looks that we need to?
There's trouble happening all the time, Joe. Not here, but in the community, I mean, it's a.
Well, they're gonna be spread throughout the community, the cameras.
No, no, these are gonna be here. We have.
Sure, there's no trouble here. We don't have, we need them somewhere else.
Gotcha. Alright.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
You know, as it pertains to what, uh, Francis was talking about, okay, is it, like last year, they had this money in, in Eschville for the forest project and some other monies that were, if, if that was included in their budget, okay, would that one escalate the bottom line?
That was grant money?
The forest project was grant money. That's how most major projects are handled, grant money.
But, but was it in their, was it in their coffers or not?
No.
No, it was grant money, two through the county.
That's my question, is, is would that, would that have had, raised the value of their, of their operation?
No.
Okay.
It's all spent, you know.
Uh, dust oil bid. We need to. We need a, to advertise for bid, um, sealed bids, receive a J township until March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Um, can be mailed to us here or dropped off here. Uh, bids will be opened at the March seventeenth meeting. Twenty thousand gallons of E-three more or less furnished and applied to various kinds of pros as needed. Bids must be unsealed, envelope marked, oil bid. So, I need that motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Put the bids out.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, dumpster bids. Summer dumpster, forty cubic yard trash dumpster to be removed on demand. Located at the J Township municipal building. Bids must be unsealed, envelope marked, dumpster.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. C E L County Association of Township Official Scholarship Applications are available. Um, we have them here. If anybody knows a senior, um, if they wanna come pick up an application. They have to attend a meeting. It's, it's on the application. It's six hundred dollars a year that's given away to Elk County senior. Um, so if anybody knows a senior, send them down to get a copy.
Is that stipulated that it has to go to college?
Like, as opposed to?
Walmart?
Walmart? No, it's, it is a college scholarship. Trade school, college, university.
But how did, how, how does the money get to, to the college?
No, no, it doesn't. It's given to the student.
It's given to the student. It's up to them to.
It's their six hundred. Once it's given, then it's their six hundred dollars. So, it's dependent on rent, books, tuition, however it is.
Went to the college?
Right, right, right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
But they have to be going to college to get the scholarship, okay?
Yeah.
Or trade school, which is not just college.
I couldn't remember if.
Gotcha.
If it, how that works.
Didn't your daughter get one?
Yeah, but I couldn't remember.
So, if anybody knows, anybody send them down to get, get the copy. Okay, CPA, advertised to perform the twenty twenty-one audit. I need a motion to please advertise one time and send proof of advertisement. J Township Board of Supervisors intend to appoint a certified public accountant to perform the annual twenty twenty-one audit in place of the elected auditors. We have no elected auditors. That's what we have to do.
Nobody, nobody else.
Nobody runs for it. Nobody wants to do it.
Really?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, one second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, assessment permits. Lois Anderson. Here, let me look at it. A second here, what? Twenty-six by thirty, no electric or water, maybe one layer of block, so it's a garage. Oh, it's residential.
I know, yeah, I know.
Calum Brook. Is that Calum, is that?
Yeah, there'd be a slow turn on the shed, putting up a new shed.
Old one tore down, new one, cabin's there, it's just a shed. Sea shed.
Down the arm bro.
Calum Brook, it says. It's not Calum Pike Road, it's Calum Brook. Jared and Christine Coors, Elm Street, Weedville. Literally putting in modular home with attached garage. There. And they're.
Their old one's still there.
Their old one's there, they're putting a new one in and tearing the old one down?
Yes.
So, they're using the same water and sewer? Okay. Commando Fortunato. This is right away off of five fifty-five recreational twenty-four by forty. They're doing it themselves, that's. No water, no sewer.
What are they doing?
Putting in a recreational building, whole building, no water, no sewer. It's a, off of five fifty-five in Calum, yeah.
Recreational building, for what?
Like a camp. That's like a camp or a, uh.
Sounds like a lawnmower shed, isn't it?
Yeah, it's just twenty-four by forty building.
Which is down west, yeah, what else?
Yeah, yeah, they got a driveway that comes in on the bottom, like a. He was here, I was here the day he came in. It was like a twenty acre piece of land in there.
But you already have facilities, like restroom facilities and?
Um, no water, no sewer. He said it's just like a shed, they're put down.
Well, how's it gonna have recreation here if you can't have that?
Maybe it's gonna be like.
Wait, explain the process of getting sewer if that was, he said no water, no sewer. Well, it might be a haunted shed for all I know, but you know what I mean? It's.
I think they're gonna have family.
I'm gonna listen to him.
Yeah.
What it's gonna do.
Yeah, maybe they're gonna put a mortgage on it. You know, let people do that.
And there's not gonna be any sides of it. It's just holes with the roof.
That? Was that what you told ya? Okay, there you go. Not even close, it's just a pavilion.
Right, we actually have all its board description.
And any of this, uh, any of this stuff goes through our D's anyway, so Russ will get those, uh. It'll go through inspection process, so if you're an inspector goes down there and says, I think that's a camp, then we'll send Russ. That's what we're, he'll call Russ.
Cost a lot of money to keep that.
I know.
She's the oldest of the three.
Sometimes you'll.
Yeah, yeah. I have another one here, if you guys are ready for it.
Yeah, we're ready.
Tom and Rebecca Yanich, Josephine Road, building sites. Seventy by sixty-four block, foundation.
Yeah.
House, garage, attached. Unattached garage, still finishing it.
Well, actually, we're, we're going for approval now.
For spit.
I think we should talk to them if they drop the option there.
Uh, on lot septic and service the St. Mary's water, so this is, yeah, Josephine.
Oh, this is the way up down there?
Josephine Rogan's, uh, move. So. Well, they've been a couple times. They're the ones that were clearing the lot up there. Okay, I know who they are.
Yeah, at least I know.
Yeah, he thought he already had a water tap there and then he had a paper water tap in St. Mary's and put it on lot system, system in, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, it's not, that's not on our system. It's just up on top of mine there. Okay, any issues with any of those?
I didn't even look in the back.
I think we're, we're, there's one thing, we're just moving out there, this for when the two, these pavilions.
Anything over ten by ten with an overhead roof, I need to look back like, any, so you need to have like.
Even though they don't have sides.
Yes, if there's an overhead roof over ten by ten. Alright, we got a motion to approve. You want a second?
I want to look at this, let's check it out. He does the same lines over there. Scott is looking. It's a whole new home?
Yeah, well, he's, he's been clearing that land for a couple years there.
Yeah, I make the motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Subdivision. It's also St. Mary's, right?
Yeah.
J Township St. Mary's.
Yeah.
So, the.
We're gonna have to sign it between the three. Alright, this subdivision, I don't remember the names. It is.
Green.
It's a, it's a private road, outback road or something. I'm listed on your outback road. But it is from John Green to Robin Gurr. So, Robin Gurr owns this property, John Green owned all this property. He's subdividing this small corner off to Robin Gurr. So, the gist of this one.
This would be serious, sorry.
Yeah, lots of ones, lots of subdivided pieces there. Off of, off of, it's being subdivided off of lot two. I'm sorry, man. Reviewed by the county planning department and no comments. Okay, we have a motion to approve the subdivision?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, we're gonna have to sign this, so I just might as leave it there for the time being. Uh, state fund CD. State fund CD, just, it's being matured. We have like ten days from the fifteenth to the twenty-fifth to, to do something with state fund CD. I had Jamie call and get the rates. You have the rates?
Alright, no, they're like.
They were point one percent for twenty-nine months. Point two percent for thirty-six months and point three percent for like five years. Um, this is the state fund. The state fund, we use Northwest Savings Bank for state fund money. Uh, it's a money market account. It's making one and a half, one and a half percent?
Yeah.
We can make one and a half percent leaving the rate on checking account, rather than tying it up for point one or point two or point three. So, one, we can just put it in checking account for now, because if we don't do anything within ten days, it's just gonna renew it. The longest term or the shortest term? The shortest term, I think it would. So, we'll, if it renew for twenty-nine months at point one percent.
You can put in a point three, is that?
The checking account's paying higher than their CD rate.
Well, let's put a state fund CD in the checking.
Well, that's what we can, that's an option that we can do. And then we can also, then we can also look around, see if we can find something better. You know, there's only certain things that happen. There's only certain things in your life you're investing with. But.
It's not gonna happen with our current administration.
Well, this thing.
Jeremy?
Yes.
What's, what's the penalty for early withdrawal if you put in for three percent? One, one month?
There's no early withdrawal. It came to maturity.
No, but I say if, if you wanted to take the money out early, would, no money?
I don't know, maybe a whole six hundred and sixty-seven dollars over the last five years. Imagine the penalty's probably higher than that.
No, well, we, they normally have that like one month, one month interest on the, uh.
Right, I guess the point being is you're making a percent and a half in the checking account. I don't know why we've invested long-term at point ten, point one percent. Um, point one, point one.
If you're trying to get.
One tenth of a percent.
Sure, if you're not gonna get penalized, I think the most would put it at one point five, which would be the.
But your last checking.
Again, okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think, you know, the figure being noted, we can look around and see if there's somebody in place better than that.
You can always pull, you can always pull an out of check.
Right, absolutely. Want it to the checking, we always put in something better if we can find something better, okay?
Once I get my new bank put in, I'll give you better of it now.
Okay, good. We need a bank in this town, Joe. Alright, if there's nothing further, we just need a motion to adjourn.
One thing real quick.
Okay, Brandon, go ahead.
One thing real quick, seriously now, I, I think Joe was mentioning about Cherry Run. And I don't know if he did, but I went down, looked at it, how the blocks all fell in. You know, the blocks.
Jersey barriers have fell on the street where they disturbed the bank, the street.
You know, that, right up from the.
Where they did, where they crossed with water line?
No, it's up above where they cross. All them Jersey barriers, they put in about thirty feet.
Okay, so one of the, like a private homeowner or something?
Yeah, remember they put in about ten years ago. It's all fell in the creek. So, it's really something supervisors need to kind of look at to get them out of there.
That's the Brian call you? Well, Joe thought it was our call you.
I went down, it's not where they dug.
Brian doesn't, it's not part of the project.
They were locked into the area where they dug, and when they pulled that piece them out where they were locked in, and the ones upstream started falling in because they lost it or.
I, I mean, I can't prove, I can't prove.
This is the first time you hear that stuff like. So, I'm gonna look around like, okay, is it like seventy-five dollars?
All right, bond on till or whatever you call it.
Brian's just getting one of you got.
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll second. All in favor?